It's called the City of Milton Common Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, October 4th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, September 30th at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move the agenda.
Second. I am not even gonna get the words out of my mouth though. I, I, in case there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? We have an agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have public comments at this time? On actionable items that are listed on the agenda? I don't think we have anybody signed up and nobody's jumping up, so we will go on to meeting dedication. And Al is gonna do the meeting dedication.
So I thought I would dedicate this meeting to an individual who unfortunately, as you may know, passed away recently. Mr. Dave Schumacher, who gave a great deal of his time to the City of Milton over many, many, many years, serving on various committees, council, plan commission, economic development, and stayed involved in the city even after he, his time kind of ended on many of those committees. Dave frequently stopped in City Hall just to kind of check in or, you know, chat about something, ask questions, you know, all the way up until the end, and, you know, continued to, you know, think big about the city, really. For those folks who were in attendance at the community recognition picnic earlier this year, Dave received an award from the, from the City of Milton for his dedicated service to the City of Milton, and I'm so glad we were able to provide that to him before his passing. And even at that meeting, Dave certainly, you know, grabbed the microphone and, and was still really adamant and interested in the City of Milton, knew what was going on all the time, really kept his finger on the pulse of the community. And, you know, it's, it's sad that his passing, but we're certainly grateful for all of the effort and time and resources and energy he put into making Milton the community it is today. So dedicating this, this meeting to Mr. Dave Schumacher.
That's a great dedication, and I was able to attend the visitation and speak with his family, and he was just thrilled over that award and they talked about it and just how appreciative he was for that. So I was, I was really glad that we did that too, so, thank you. Okay, Mayor proclamation Indigenous Peoples' Day. Proclamation to recognize the Second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day began in commemoration of 500 years of survival and renewal of indigenous, indigenous nations in the face of genocide, colonization, political, religious, and cultural repression. And whereas Milton Common Council recognized that Indigenous people of this hemisphere that would later be known as the Americas have lived on these lands since time immemorial. Immemorial. And the Milton Common Council recognizes the fact that Milton was built upon the homelands of the indigenous people of this region. And whereas the Milton Common Council values the many contributions made to our community through Indigenous people's knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, arts, land conservation techniques, along with deep spiritual, cultural practice, helped shape the character of the land known as Wisconsin. And whereas the Milton Common Council will continue to support Indigenous nations' social and environmental justice, religious, religious freedom, and tribal sovereignty efforts. And whereas the Milton Common Council honors our country's indigenous roots and correct history and seeks with this celebration to bring greater understanding of diversity by inclusion of Indigenous peoples' culture and voice to the table in Milton, Wisconsin. And whereas the Milton Common Council will recognize the desire of all Indigenous people representing all 567 tribal nations to celebrate the Second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day with special attention to Wisconsin's 12 federally recognized tribal nations. And now therefore be it resolved by the Milton Common Council duly assembled this fourth day of October 2022 to affirm and proclaim that the Second Monday in October will be known as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I, I'm staying neutral, I promise. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. All right, presentation by Milton Youth Coalition, and go ahead and introduce yourself to the council.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Maggie Kaseke. I'm the project coordinator for Milton Youth Coalition. I sent out the presentation because I know it's a little tough to see, so I will go along as we, hopefully you can see, if you have any questions, please just stop me and ask questions. So we are Milton Youth Coalition, and as we, Al's gonna help me out and kind of try to turn it. Our mission is working together to make a positive difference in the lives of Milton's youth. You can see here on the, our first slide, this is our executive committee right now. We actually just had elections last month, so these are our new, our chair is Chris Ramos from American Heart Association, vice chair is Charlotte Walker from Charlotte's Coffee Stop, secretary Carly Felsteed from American Family Insurance, and treasurer is Anisa. I don't think that one needs a full introduction. So the history of us, we've been around since 2012, when the coalition started heavily around bullying when it first formed. There was a lot of things that were happening in the school district with bullying, so a group of people came together and decided that this needed to be addressed. Grassroots organization, you would have seen the signs like on there, "Live the Milton Way, No Bullying", these were everywhere. I'm not gonna read everything they did, they did a lot. Unfortunately, they disbanded in 2017, kind of fell apart, and then reconvened in 2019, and that's when they decided to have a substance misuse focus. And this was really important again because the data was showing that substances were on the rise in the school district, along with mental health, that is a huge issue, and social media. So while they came back, they decided they needed some money, and there is a grant out there called the Drug-Free Communities Grant that is provided by the CDC. This is $125,000 per year for five years. This is a big grant. After five years, you can reapply for an additional five. It is a competitive process, so in the long run Milton could have this grant for 10 years. And that is a lot of money funneling into the community to address substance misuse. With that, I am 100% funded through that grant, and then you can see here our project director is Ashley and the business official is Kelsey. Those two currently are in-kind for us. However, we are looking to add an administrative fee to the grant to help cover some of those costs there. With this, I do have an in-kind match of 100%. So what that means is for every $125,000 that the federal government gives us, we have to match that with in-kind donation of $125,000. So any time, meeting space, volunteer time, people giving us donations. As those things are coming in, we have to give them a monetary value so we can make sure we're matching that $125,000. Right now, for the first five, first six years, it's 100%, match. In years seven and eight, it's 125% match, and years nine and 10, it's 150% match. So it is really important that we're building our volunteer base and we're building in-kind donations because the federal government expects us to be able to sustain us. Our fiscal agent is you, the City of Milton, so thank you all for helping us get this and holding our grant and our money. With this grant, we have to pick two substances to focus on. With this, we looked at data, and the data currently suggests that we should be focusing on alcohol and nicotine. You'll notice I use the word nicotine and not tobacco. We are in a vaping epidemic right now in our school systems, and it is important that we use the word nicotine instead of tobacco because somebody could say there's no tobacco in a vaping device, so that's why we use the word nicotine. We are also required to have 12 sectors at the table. This is a requirement of the grant. So this is parents, school, law enforcement, businesses, 12 different sectors that must be at the table, and we do have to report on those. We have logic models and action plans that we develop. A logic model is just like a roadmap. We say, what is our problem? Why do we have this problem? What does this problem look like here in Milton? And how do we address it? And then environmental strategies. This is a grant that really focuses on not programs, but developing strategies that will impact generations to come. So we don't want something that's just a one done and we forget about it. This is changing policy, making change that will forever be implemented here in Milton to protect our youth. So what do we do? That's a lot of money. How do we do that? We provide training, policy change that I just hit on. We do campaigns for youth and adults. You've probably seen some of our billboards up. We partner a lot with Rock County Prevention Network, so all of us in Rock County are doing the same message at the same time. So if somebody's driving through the county, they're being exposed to it multiple times. We have free lock boxes and free alcohol locks that we give out at community events. Or if somebody just needs one and they call and say, hey, I'm in need of this, we provide those for free. We do prom awareness and post-prom events, and I'll kind of touch on that in the next slide. We have a vape cart and a hidden in plain site. Vape cart gives education of the ingredients that are in vape pens. And hidden in plain sites, a bedroom scene that parents can walk through, and it's set up to see how their students, their kids could hide vaping devices, marijuana devices. It's quite eye-opening. We have a strengthening families program with the school district of Milton that is offered to families to help them work as a parent and child class. They go in, they do separate sessions, and then they come back together, and it helps them go through difficult conversations. And in the next couple of months, we're hoping to get our youth group up and our podcasts running. That is our hope in the next few months if nothing crazy happens. The other big thing we do is substance-free activities. I'm sure you heard about the homecoming bonfire that happened. That was us that organized that, along with Charlotte and David Walker. They were huge in helping us plan that. These are important because it gives youth an alternative other than having to go out and drink or vape or feel that pressure of this. So the bonfire was important for us that after homecoming, it's a big night. After the game, after the dance, where do they go? So we decided to target after the game. We had 450 youth attend the bonfire. We planned for 250, so we were a little overwhelmed with 450, but we made it work. PNL Entertainment was our DJ that night with a light show. We had over 20 volunteers, 16 cases of water that did not, we had to go out and buy water, 40 pizzas that were gone in a heartbeat. We didn't know what to do about that, and 400 glow sticks that we gave out that night. All of the feedback we've heard from the students was it was amazing and they'd like this to keep going. So thank you to all the volunteers that helped and the donations. You can see here, this is where that in-kind starts to accumulate for us, is all those volunteers that were there that night for us, we get to count as in-kind, and that's where that starts to track. So how can you help? Check us out on social media, our website, be aware, share, and celebrate our successes. Sitting here, listening to me, go on and on about what we're doing. You might go home and have that conversation with somebody else, and that builds our awareness. And as more people become aware, we become part of the community, and people start to see that Milton Youth Coalition is actually making a difference. You can check out our website. That'll hopefully be live by the end of this week. I keep saying that every week, I feel like. We do have a newsletter that will start going out. Please reach out to me, and you're welcome to join the coalition. We meet the first Wednesday of every month from 8:30 to 10:00 in this room. So tomorrow is our coalition meeting where we will be working. Tomorrow, I'm giving a vaping presentation to educate the coalition on what we are seeing with vaping and in our community. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Are your meetings publicized for just the general public to come also?
Yep, anybody can come to them. Currently, we're sitting about, I'd say about 20 community members that are coming. We have a lot of school district staff that are coming, but we're continuously growing our other sectors as we've been up. I've been, I was hired in April, so that's been the big focus, is growing that coalition to expand to all of our sectors.
Great job, and I'm sure you can come back and give us your vaping presentation too. We appreciate, and one thing about the bonfire, like it went off very smoothly that night. The kids were super well behaved and just amazing. So I know Maggie and I have had conversations about how oftentimes we don't, we don't trust our youth or give them the opportunity to make really good choices, and they were given an opportunity to do that that night, and, and they, they were fabulous. We have really great youth, and they can make good choices, and, and they deserve to be recognized for that and praised and celebrated for that. Presentation, discussion, and direction regarding the draft 2023 annual budget.
All right, it's that time of year again. I've kind of give, given folks some teasers on the 2023 budget, but we are now in the position of the year where we present our draft budget. This is our first iteration of the budget. Well, it's probably our fifth, 100th iteration of the budget, but where we stand today, this will be the first time we've kind of displayed it to the public. And those of you who have, this is my ninth budget at the City of Milton, so those of you who have seen these budget presentations in the past know that I try to be very thorough, try to kind of walk through the process. And this year, I'm gonna do the same thing, but the budget presentation as a whole is gonna look very different than it looked in years past, because I really want to focus on what, how the budget is constructed, to give a better understanding of the things that we are constricted by and, and how that plays into kind of the give and take and the mosaic of the budget. So here is our 2023 draft budget overview. And I emailed this out to everybody as well, so if you want to follow along on your own individual device, feel free to do so, because like Maggie said, it's hard to read the screen there, but. So I want to start here. You know, this is a number that I personally talk about a lot because I think it's important, not only to the public, but it's incredibly important to our budget construction process. We saw 66, $67 million worth of growth in our equalized value from 2021 to 2022. To put that into perspective, TIF 6, our largest TIF district. That has United Ethanol, that's got Penn Color, Charter NEX, Quick Trip, Nate Rogers' Project. That whole TIF district in its entirety equals about $40 million. So we realized the growth of greater than basically one and a half TIF districts in one year. Now, this is a combination of everything that's happening out there, new home constructions, organic growth, you know, renovations, but this includes, you know, some of the larger projects that we're seeing out in our industrial park, whether that's Carl's Place Building, you know, being under construction last year, Freedom Graphics expansion, you know, there's a lot that goes into this number, but this is an incredibly important number because it really is where the budget is created. It's an important number as well because it shows the success we're having. I've said this before, we, our value has grown $225 million in the last five years. So look at the, look at the numbers on the, on the screen. You know, that is a massive amount of growth in a, in a five-year period. It's why we're the fastest-growing community in Rock County. It's why we were able to lower the tax rate 15.7% last year. It's why we have the success that we have, and this is a continuation of that trend. And certainly, this trend is going to continue. SSI, or you know, the Badger Properties building is doubling in size. Clausen Quality Chocolates is, there's not one cent of Clausen Quality Chocolate in that number, not one cent of it. And now there's a 450,000 square foot building out there. So, you know, this number is gonna continue to increase, probably at an increasing rate, at least for the foreseeable future. So why is that number important? Because like I said on a couple of occasions, that is where the budget is constructed. We are under two caps that are placed on all municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. The first is expenditure restraint, and the second is levy limits. These are the two constructs that really establish what our budget is. Expenditure restraint is how much you can spend. Levy limits is how much you can tax. In a real world, or in an ideal world, those two numbers would be exactly the same, but oftentimes they are diametrically opposed, and we will show tonight how that affect, how that kind of plays out in reality. So when I say levy limits means how much you can tax, it's exactly what it sounds like. Levy limits are a state-imposed arithmetic equation that is based on the previous slide that says, based on your overall equalized value, this is how much you can tax. And the only way you can ever increase that number is when your city grows. So I say it every year, and I'll say it again, I say it in all the presentations I give. It's get busy living or get busy dying. That is how the budgets are constructed in the state of Wisconsin. So levy limits, again, state-imposed cap that you cannot violate. You cannot violate without penalty from the state, meaning that they will slash your shared revenue if you violate levy limits. Expenditure restraint, you don't have to comply with, but you're heavily penalized if you don't. So there's no law that says you have to comply to expenditure restraint. There is absolutely a law that says you have to comply with levy limits. So again, I said, what's the only way you can increase the amount you can tax? Well, there's only one way you can do it, and that is through net new construction. Net new construction is that percentage in which your community grew. In 2022, Milton grew by, well, I'm sorry, in 2021, effective in 2022, for the 2023 budget, we grew by 1.54%, which doesn't sound like much, but it is a lot. It's a lot, as evidenced by the previous slide. 1.54% is, 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 it's not the top number in Rock County this year, but it's in the top two or top three. By comparison, some of our neighbors have, that number is .4 or .2. So that is the only way you can increase the amount you can tax is through net new construction. So 1.54%, $69 million worth of growth. What's that equate to? $41,000. That's how much we can increase, how much we tax, $41,000. So I will not step too much on my soapbox tonight, but just think about that for a second. We have $69 million worth of new property that we need to serve, protect, ensure that it has, you know, quality services, and we've got $41,000 to do it with. No one, no one could operate a business like that. I don't care who you are, nobody could do it. So the common phrase of live within your means and operate like a business, no business operates like that, and absolutely we cannot live within our means when that's what we get in return for doing the right thing. So I'll step off my soapbox for the rest of the presentation, but you're gonna see how this impacts us greatly and why that $41,000 is laughable compared to what else is going on in the world. Other things that we can get, we get state aid. State aid comes in the form of many different varieties, personal property aid, computer aid, highway aid, shared revenue. Our aid decreased by $4,000. So again, we've done everything right. We've grown by $69 million. We get this windfall of $41,000, and then immediately our state aid decreases by $4,000. Live within your means, operate like a business. Okay, now I promise I'm off. But this is why it's so frustrating for folks, and this is why the League of Municipalities, you know, runs against a brick wall, and why the legislature has absolutely no clue at all. And they don't care about how this impacts the ability to provide services, essential services to people. It's why things are happening in Jackson, Mississippi, the way they are, and why they happen in Flint, Michigan, and the way they do it, did, and we are all on the precipice of that at any given moment, frankly. So $41,000, we got 69, $66 million worth of growth, we get to have $41,000 to live within our means. Here are some things that we have absolutely no control over that go into our budget. Our health insurance increased by 6.9%, which actually was a pretty, pretty good number per stories of 10%, 20%, 30%. 6.9%, that equates to $31,963 increase to the budget on day one. So we had 41,000, we lost 4,000 in state aid, and now we've got a $32,000 bill for health insurance. Our energy and fuel costs increased by 8%, that's $15,000. Police, union contract calls for a 3% increase. Now, you can say that's within, you have control over that. You can negotiate a contract. But where's the balancing act? We want public safety, police and fire are our essential service. We want to have the best and brightest, so we need to pay our people a commensurate rate with what's out there in the marketplace. 3% is commensurate.
But it doesn't even cover inflation.
No, no, not even close. Contracted services went up $7,923. That's insurance, that's, that's assessor, that's legal. And the city's debt repayment schedule increases by $42,000. Now, that's a, that's a planned increase. That's decisions that were made, some, some of those, some of those dollars were made 17 years ago. So how does this all work together? We get a $41,000 increase to our levy. We lose $31,000 in health insurance. We lose $15,000 in fuel. We lose 4,000 in state aid. We lose 8,000 in contracted services. So before we even can start to construct the budget, we already have to cut $17,000. To live within our means, to operate like a business, we are the most successful company city in Rock County, and we have to cut our budget. That's how this all works in the real world. That's how this all plays out in reality. We see a lot of political ads on TV right now. You're not gonna see this. So how do we do this? How do we continue to increase growth? How do we continue to provide services? How do we continue to hire the best and the brightest and retain them? We have to do gymnastics in the process. So what does this mean, the 2023 budget? We will levy to the max, which is $3.5 million. That's what we are allowed to, to, to tax as, as indicated by the state. As of right now, we do not qualify for levy limits, and if you remember a couple of slides ago, we have to comply with levy limits. We absolutely have to. There is not a choice about it. We do qualify for expenditure restraint, however, which is good. So right now, we have to reduce the budget by, not right now, not literally right now, but if we were forced to adopt the budget tonight, we would have to trim the budget by $28,877 in order to meet levy limits. We have to do that. We must comply. So this is where the hard work begins for us on the front end. We know some of these numbers. They come in at disparate times, but we're at the point now where everything I've shared with you obviously is a known entity. A decision we made earlier this year, which impacts our 2023 budget, is we added a 12th officer. That had an overall budget impact of $82,000. We eliminated the planning and zoning coordinator position. This is the first time that I have said that publicly, but internally, we've had many, many, many discussions about it. We went through a recruitment process that was unsuccessful, and in order to balance the budget, one of the things that kind of fell off was the planning and zoning administrator position. The good news is, we didn't have to lay the beat off because we never filled the position. The bad news is, that is a loss in capacity that we were banking on, that we were hoping for. We made full-time adjustments to three part-time employees that had an impact of $37,000 as they indicated health insurance. As I indicated, health insurance was thirty-one thousand. Uh, we talked about the three percent wage adjustment, three percent wage adjustment equates to fifty-four thousand dollars. CPI, Consumer Price Index, which is essentially inflation, is seven point seven percent. A three percent increase to all employees, which is four point three percent below or four point seven percent below inflation, equates to fifty-four thousand. So you know, again, this is something that often grabs a lot of attention. Oh, government employees, government employees. A three percent increase, which is not even close to inflation, has an impact on the budget only of fifty-four thousand. I mean, that, that's really not that big of a blip. Um, so you know, it gets a lot of attention, gets a lot of lip service, gets a lot of traction on political ads. But in, again, in reality, it does not bear out with facts. Fire department allocation will increase thirteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six. That number might get slightly adjusted based on a conversation I had with Randy today. So these are the, this is the gymnastics. This is how we essentially can balance the budget are these last two items, employee allocations and non-property tax revenues. Employee allocations, every employee uh, has an allocation. All of us do. Everybody seated at the dais and on the wings has an allocation. What that means is, a certain percentage of our wages get charged to the general fund, which is what we're talking about tonight. A certain percentage will get charged to uh, water utility and wastewater and stormwater and Tiff districts. Um, and each year we take a look at that. That's why we track our time so diligently, especially down in public works. We want to make sure that the, the, the activities that are being performed, the costs are being apportioned appropriately. So every year we go through this exercise. Some years it works out to our advantage in terms of the general fund, some years it doesn't. This year was one of those years, fortunately, we were able to kind of shift fifty-four thousand dollars out of the general fund and into the other uh, cost centers. It balances the general fund, but it puts a greater burden on those other cost centers. But it gets it out of the general fund because we have to comply with levy limits. And non-property tax revenue, we have obviously seen a lot of development occur in the city of Milton. And we are going to continue to see a lot of development occur in the city of Milton. The next item on the agenda is a developers agreement for a second phase of residential development. We know that we have another one planned on the south side of town and we know that we have another one planned on the north side of town. There is revenue, non-property tax revenue that is generated through that, basically through building permit issuances. Uh, there's other things such as park rentals and dog licenses and things like that. We took a look at the historical trends and the trends that we're gonna see in the future and we were able to bump that number up forty-nine thousand. It has a parenthetical annotation that says a negative, but remember we're talking about the levy, so the levy can decrease as revenue increases. So the twenty twenty-two budget tax levy was three point four million. We are projecting a three point five million dollar tax levy and I pretty much guarantee the next time you see this presentation, that number will be lower. Too many clickers. So I understand that there's no way you can read this from where you said, hopefully you've got it up on your screen. But as we do uh, every year, as we talk about kind of what are the items, those were the major changes in terms of operations. One of the big discussions every year is around capital and how do we fund our capital? We still are uh, you know, in this kind of borrowing moratorium. Um, so we try to fund our capital through the general fund. So right now, this is what's in. We've got some shop equipment, a skid loader, one and a half squad cars. Uh, uh, hot mix asphalt preventative maintenance, that's basically seal coating, chip sealing. Some picnic tables, uh, the rehabilitation of the Lamar uh, pavilion. Uh, some miscellaneous concrete repairs that come up every year, generally on Madison Avenue. And the Surrey Drive resurfacing, which will be our big roadway project next year. Those all total two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which is the same number as we had in the budget last year. Um, so I met with staff yesterday and gave them this presentation and you know, one of the comments that we generally hear is, oh, can't you just pave one less street? And I, I know I kind of beat that to death yesterday, but paving one less street is a one-time expense that doesn't solve really anything and just continues to create a structural deficit in the budget every year. So under this scenario, uh, the general fund portion of Surrey Drive is twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. So let's say we take that out of capital and we put that into um, you know, the, the planning and zoning administrator position. We'll never get that twenty-two thousand dollars back in capital unless we borrow for it, because now it's tied up in an operational ongoing fund or an expense. So the idea of paving one less street doesn't really work. Because in order to fund that planning and zoning administrator position next year, we'll have to pave one less street on top of the one less street that we paved the year before. And now this number shrieks again. So you know, again, it's just, it's one of those kind of simple answers to complex situations that seem to gain traction. That seem to play out in social media and play out, uh, you know, under, in the Gazette comments and all that stuff. But again, these are facts. This is reality. This isn't a political ad, this isn't a Facebook post, this is reality. So these are the things that are in. Uh, what's out right now is uh, the general fund portion of a BACO, which is needed, uh, which is thirty thousand dollars. And then the Madison Avenue and North Clear Lake project that we've talked about, right now that is not in the budget. At nine hundred and forty-eight, nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the general fund portion, that will never, ever, ever be repaired with general fund dollars. It's impossible with the way the budget is constructed right now. There's just no way. Again, think about that concept of pave one less street. Alright, let's flip it on its head, let's pave one more street. So now that two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars on the previous slide is now three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which means a hundred thousand dollars has to get cut from operation because we're under levy limits. So the only option for us is to just defer the maintenance on this into perpetuity and wait for the state, which is ultimately their responsibility anyways. Or we borrow for it. And we've been in the situation of holding pattern for borrowing since two thousand and fifteen. There is light at the end of the tunnel in the borrowing moratorium. And we may see this item before you again in early twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three as part of one of our very first borrowings in nearly a decade. Because it has to be done. And with the way the budget is constructed, it cannot be funded in any other way. We've applied for a lot of grants. Tried to. And ironically, that road is not eligible for many grants because it's a state road. So, so these items are not in the budget. These are the non-general fund items that are included in the budget. This, this is really kind of not necessarily germane to the conversation of the twenty twenty-three budget. But I think it's important to point the picture of the mosaic that we go through in order to establish funding, full funding of projects. So we saw on the last slide, how can you resurface Surrey Drive for twenty-two thousand dollars? Well, again, that's only the general fund portion. Wheel tax, we'll pay for a hundred and forty-five thousand of it. Water utility will pay for a thousand dollars of it, wastewater will pay for thirteen hundred of it. Uh, and stormwater will pay for sixteen thousand of it. So that's the funding package that we need to put together in order to make a project like that happen. And that's just one street. We got a lot of streets in Milton. Luckily, we have been very proactive in our preventative maintenance. And our overall PESA ratings, I say this every year, uh, are, are generally higher than our surrounding neighbors, so we're in good shape. But we get beat up all the time on social media and in the public about how terrible our roads are. This is reality. Pave one more street. Okay. Then what, what are we not doing? Levy limits. The overall Madison Avenue project is that nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars plus one point eight million dollars to do the entire project. So we're talking about two point seven million dollars to do that project. Now, the vast majority of that will come from the utilities, but the general fund portion alone is prohibited without borrowing. So we'll talk about that probably more in early twenty twenty-three or late twenty twenty-two. Oops, oops. Next item on the agenda, which always garners a lot of conversation, um, you know, I'm always reluctant to put this slide in, but it seems to be the thing that gets, that generates the most discussion up here and out in the community is the nonprofit uh, requests. As we've done in the past, we have level funded them in the budget. But those level fundings are not commensurate with the request. So we always provide a history to kind of show what uh, these entities have asked for versus what they've received. Um, gathering place in Milton Health both asked for twenty thousand, we have them in level funded at ten thousand. But we always kind of want to remind folks that, you know, they've gotten an additional ten thousand for the last three years. Uh, so in some ways their request is made whole, but usually after the fact. So again, I'm always hesitant to put this in there, but it's what people talk about, so um, I, I think it's important. Twenty-five thousand dollars on a three point five million dollar levy. That's just how it is. So this slide probably looks familiar. We always have budget goals every year. We want to balance the budget. We want to stay within levy limits, which we have not. We want to qualify for expenditure restraint. We don't want to reduce service and we want no new levy-supported borrowing, which at this time is, holds true. So the work we've got to do is we've got to check all those boxes. Um, and we still have time, obviously. Uh, you'll see in a couple of slides, we don't intend to adopt the budget until November fifteenth. By then, we will have some of this information. There's just a few outstanding items related to unknowns. The assessment ratio, which will not fix the budget deficit problem, but directly impacts the tax rate, the percentage which shows up on property tax bills. We have zero control over it, but it is an unknown aspect at this point. So if somebody was to come to me and say, what is the tax rate with this budget? I can't answer that question because I don't know the assessment ratio yet. The assessment ratio comes from the state. Um, and the last thing is, is we don't have our final road and highway aid number yet. So that four thousand dollar reduction uh, previously uh, in state aid, that maybe, maybe it goes up. Maybe, maybe highway and roadway goes up ten thousand dollars and we see a net increase of six thousand dollars. But I doubt it. These numbers have historically uh, uh, consistently trended downward. I made this comment at the meeting yesterday, we found um, uh, some paperwork from the state just back from like two thousand and ten. I mean, we're not talking about, you know, the good old days. We're talking about just a few years ago. Our, our state aid in two thousand and ten was something like seventy percent higher than it is today. And we were about one quarter of our size back then. So the budget takeaways, um, this budget maintains current service levels. We're not talking about any service reductions. It compensates all employees at the same increase, the three percent. Uh, there's no change uh, in percentage paid on insurance premiums. It's still, we're holding tight at the fourteen percent. Uh, it maintains capital and infrastructure funding levels, the two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars that we talked about on the screen with the skid steer or uh, yeah, the skid steer and uh, Surrey, Surrey Drive and the picnic tables. And uh, this budget qualifies for state expenditure restraint, but does not qualify for state imposed levy limits at this time. It will when we adopt it, but I just want folks to know that there's still some um, work that needs to be done. This budget has no new tax levy-supported borrowing component. So uh, moving forward, tonight, um, we will approve the publication of the budget. Uh, state statutes require that you publish your draft budget with the understanding that the publication of it does not set anything in stone. All of these numbers can change between now and the time that we adopt it, whether by choice or by uh, by changes from uh, uh, variables, input variables. Uh, the budget will then appear in the newspaper on uh, October eleventh. We have the budget public hearing scheduled for November first, and then the goal is to approve the budget on uh, November fifteenth. What's not included in there is our regular common council meeting on October twenty-fifth. Uh, so we'll have an update of this presentation, but shorter. Um, it uh, at, at our October twenty-fifth meeting, so hopefully we'll have more, more new numbers by then. So that kind of uh, completes my overall budget presentation. It's a little bit longer than I thought it was gonna be, but um, you guys, you guys know me, I'm a little passionate about this, so that's where we stand today.
Questions?
I just wanted to say, Al, thank you for setting this presentation up the way that you have. I think that a lot, there's a lot of confusion out in the community as to how we do this. And I think that you did an awesome job. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the um, budget publication.
Second. Sneaky. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of, anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Anyone else want to make any comment on the budget or questions? Okay. Alright. Discussion on possible action regarding a residential developers agreement for Journey Hills residential subdivision first edition.
So I, I referenced this in my last presentation as one of the examples of the growth that we're seeing. Uh, Journey Hills, which is this residential subdivision uh, along North Janesville Street. Uh, they have uh, uh, submitted and approved their final plat for their first edition, which is their second phase of development. The contingency related to that approval was for the city to enter into a developers agreement with the developer. Uh, attached is that developers agreement. If you uh, in talking with Jeff Leeson, we joked, if you held this up to the original developers agreement, there's really only two lines that are different. Uh, because it just reflects the second phase of development and then how that ripples through the document, so. Uh, they have already signed the agreement and provided a signed copy back to us. So all that's left is for the common council to approve the developers agreement. And then we were working with the uh, uh, the developer to receive the letter of credit that will cover the uh, um, um, infrastructure improvements in this second phase of development.
I would move approval of the developers agreement for Journey Hills subdivision.
Second.
Giving it to Larry. There, there's a motion in a second. Any questions or comments?
I just.
Go ahead.
I just want to say they, they've, they've uh, they've also recently paved the first portion of the street and I thought it turned out very nice. I've walked back and forth on there several times and they did a good job, I thought. Based on my limited knowledge of construction.
Okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion on possible action regarding an amendment from Baxter and Woodman to the lift station design work order. Mark.
Uh, this, excuse me, this is an amendment to the previously approved work order for the lift station design. The design of the lift station on John Fall Road near Golden Lane. Um, we had some preliminary discussions with the, a property owner. The station is located in the terrace. We're really trying to get it out of the terrace to provide uh, safer access for our crews to work on. It does need to be replaced as well. It's, it was listed in the previous um, sewer capacity analysis as a station that should be replaced. Unfortunately, the site that we uh, we desired and did some of the uh, early design work on is no longer feasible. So we um, there's additional work required to relocate the station, uh, several hundred feet to the south. And uh, we're looking at a different site, which hopefully will work, but again, some design work needs to take place. Uh, so this work order is to fund that additional work. The funding will come from uh, the various accounts as Al referenced in the budget presentation, based on the work performed. You know, sewer street, um, general fund, when, when the project takes place.
Questions or comments?
So this might, this site might be more appropriate, basically, too.
Yeah, so we're looking at private sites in a close proximity to the existing station to hopefully reduce the construction cost. Alternatively, we could go to a city-owned site, but the nearest city-owned sites are quite a ways away and it would require additional underground utility uh, improvements, which add substantial cost.
Make a motion that we approve the work order amendment number one from Baxter and Woodman for the lift station design.
Second.
And yet, here we are. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion on possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three authorizing the purchase of property and execution of closing documents for land located along Arthur Drive.
So every year, uh, unfortunately, uh, Rock County forecloses on properties that are uh, being foreclosed on due to failure to pay taxes for uh, for uh three, in excess of three years. Uh, we always get a report every year, more often than not. Um, we take a look at the report and pass it on. Uh, very rarely does something show up on that report where we say, oh, that's uh, that's interesting. By state statutes, i- if the county forecloses on a property, uh, the municipality in which that property is located essentially gets the first opportunity to purchase that site. And the purchase price would be for whatever is owed in back taxes. Um, like I said, more often than not, we take a look at it and then they pass by. Very rarely is there something in there that uh, you know, poses a uh public utility need or, or something of that nature, but this one is a little bit different. Um, the property located at the uh southern end of uh, well, I guess, on Arthur Drive as it bends. Uh, we've had our eye on this for a while, uh, because we i- had not been paying taxes and it is a prime development site. It's a greenfield site that is uh is yeah, shown in our comprehensive plan for multifamily or office space or mixed use. Um, it's zoned appropriately, um, and the property has just sat idle for decades. And, and taxes haven't been paid on it for quite some time. Uh, so in discussions internally, uh, thought, you know, maybe this makes sense for this to be a pos- a property that we, that the city would step in in. And I have an ideological or philosophical belief that government should never interfere in the private marketplace. Um, however, I think this situation is prudent, uh, because uh we are in a situation where there are uh several private property owners who have been reluctant to, to move forward with any projects. So we're kind of landlocked in many instances, yeah, throughout the city. Uh, where private ownership has uh, as, as for whatever reason, and I'm sure there are reasons that are just, uh, not move forward with development. So our concern was, will this happen to this site as well? Uh, so for the very minimal in the big scheme of things, uh, cost of acquisition of, of forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, we would control that site and we would be able to then provide it, uh, market it and then hopefully uh lure a developer in who we know will bring this property to a useful end. Uh, and we already have at least one entity that's expressed interest in it because they track these things too. So uh, we haven't done this since two thousand and sixteen. If you probably forgot, if you, if you were here in two thousand and sixteen. We acquired a small piece of property that was landlocked, uh, that bordered King Park and it allowed for us to kind of expand King Park. Um, which was, again, there's a public utility there. This one's a little bit different. Uh, but I think it's one of those situations where housing is the number one issue right now in most of Rock County and it's only going to get worse as we talk about the number of jobs that are coming in, which is great. Um, and we just can't afford to have another property sit idle. Uh, we can't afford to have somebody come in and buy up large tracts of land and then just do nothing with it. Uh, so this situation is a, is a unique opportunity. Uh, we would fund this uh acquisition, this initial acquisition uh through TIF ten and then e- and essentially market it for the cost that we have in it. Uh, so that would be our plan and Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three uh authorizes the purchase of the property. We would work with Rock County to do that and then the execution of the closing documents in order to gain title of the site.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three authorizing the purchase of property and execution of closing documents for land load- located on Arthur Drive.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries.
I really think that this is a great, great thing for us to be doing right now because we are in such a need for residential housing.
Yep. All right, discussion and possible action regarding an amendment from Baxter and Woodman to the East High Street Utility Design Work.
So this amendment is for additional waters or water main design um as part of the overall industrial park water infrastructure. Uh, looking to create a, a loop of the water system. Partly related to the expansion of uh Claussen and also the, the upcoming um CNG project. The previous work order, the limits were um State Highway fifty-nine. Uh, this amendment provides for design services for work um crossing State Highway fifty-nine and parallel to State Highway fifty-nine to Vicarman Road.
Questions or comments? You guys must be getting tired.
Motion to approve work order amendment number one from Baxter and Woodman for the East High Utility Extension Design.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action on Parks Code of Conduct Policy.
So the Parks and Recreation Commission met on Monday last week to review a draft of a code of conduct that would allow us to um essentially enforce the rules of some of our parks and make sure that everyone's having an enjoyable experience at each of our parks and um, you know, having a, having a great time. So we put together a draft code of conduct and that was based on the library's code of conduct and also the Madison Park System. They have a Parks Behavior Policy. So we took those and put them together to try and make something that would work for the city of Milton. So Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed it, staff reviewed it internally, Attorney Schrader reviewed it as well, and this is the final product that we're bringing to council to review and hopefully approve. So just checking to see if there are any questions. The process essentially is that if there's a complaint that is received from city staff, then myself, Police Chief Scott Marquardt and um Public Works Director Mark Langer will meet, discuss the complaint and then decide a course of action from there. If there's um a decision to ban a park user from a park for a period of time and they decide to appeal it, they have that ability to do that to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Questions, comments?
I appreciate the effort on the appeal process and that. I really think that's a good addition um to give people the chance to uh, you know, say, I want to, I want to make amends to this or I want to change my behavior or whatever it has to be. So I appreciate that and I like the idea of expanding to all the parks because we don't know what might be going on in some of those.
Yeah, and like the splash pad has specific rules for that facility, so making sure that people are, you know, not taking their bikes on the splash pad, which can result in damage to it, so there's a course for us then to take if there's issues.
I would move approval of the Parks Code Conduct Policy.
Second.
I just want, wanted to point out, there's collaboration here from both sides now. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. General items?
I have a general item. Um, I attended the thirtieth anniversary at the gathering place. It was a very well-attended event and um there were just, just as I expected, just a heck of a lot more history that I appreciate a- about the city of Milton. Um, but there is one thing that I just would like to say for the gathering place. Um, it seems that they have already had come, so someone say that they were concerned about the tax dollars that went into their new addition. And I just want to clarify that everything that has taken place outside the gathering place in their gardens was in kind or donations, not tax dollars. We just want everyone to enjoy the facility, just as Marion Allen would have liked.
I attended that event too. And it was very well-attended and it was good music and it was a beautiful night, so. Any other general items? Any committee reports?
Historic Preservation meets tomorrow night.
And Historic Preservation Commission, they're working on putting together an oral history project that's focused on the merger of Milton, Milton Junction. And we're going to be doing um interviews with community members at the um, sorry, I'm getting distracted by the YouTube. Um, at, at the end of, of the month. So if there's anyone in the community that's um, that lived through the merger of Milton and Milton Junction and would be interested in being interviewed, um, we'd, we'd appreciate knowing that so we can set up those interview times.
Anything else for anyone on committee reports?
The Library Board met last night and we have um some dates that we're waiting for from some of our other counties. So we will definitely keep you posted as to the exciting things that we have coming in the uh library system. The Story Gardens is as beautiful as ever and if you haven't had the chance to go and look at that, you really should. There's, they've, every time I look at, there's something new going on. And that again is our community. Thank you.
Public Works met uh just previous to the council meeting. Um, there is an item that probably you should be uh alerted to. Uh, there's a recommendation coming from uh the uh committee uh to close and remove the o- waste oil tank. Um, uh, they have not been receiving oil uh for a while. And the uh recommendation is that it be closed and removed um since uh it is possible to dispose of waste oil uh through our um trash carrier. Um, so there's a, an option and less liability on the part of the city for having that tank, so. That will be coming to the council, but should you get a phone call, um, uh, it has been shut down. Um, Mark, Mark, we, yeah, for, for a considerable period of time now. Uh, Mark did share a story, said we hadn't heard anything from anyone in terms of complaints until, what is it, yesterday? Uh, until yesterday and somebody inquired why they weren't able to dispose of their oil. Um, they were told that they could through their regular trash pickup or through their uh, the bulk trash pickup, I guess. And uh, they said, well, but I don't live in the city of Milton, so the only complaint came from a, a, a non-resident. Um, the other thing that will be coming to the council uh is a um uh change in terms of surplus policy uh and the level uh at which uh it would have to come to the council. So look for that in the future as well.
Any other committees?
Fire Commission is meeting tomorrow evening.
At seven.
At seven, here.
For a budget, budget presentation. For a budget presentation?
Yes.
All right.
I'll just say Plan Commission met today at four o'clock. Um, there was a large item on the agenda for the site plan for Charter Next Generation. Uh, that was tabled uh by the developer uh due to just i- it incomplete submittal. They weren't able to put it all together in time for the meeting, so uh they've requested that be pushed back to the next Plan Commission meeting, which is scheduled for October twenty-fifth.
Okay. Jenny?
Okay, I just have an election update. Um, so right now for absentee ballots, we have three hundred and forty-three that were sent out. Four were returned as undeliverable and ninety were returned completed and added to the system. Um, so the last date of request absentee ballot is November third, so it's a Thursday. And then in-office absentee voting will begin on October twenty-fifth. So I was very excited and a little overwhelmed with, um, we have had three additional community members that are interested in working elections. Um, so that may be um upon approval of Zoom Air, to have additional ones. Um, so we, we honestly, we don't need those people. However, there are a lot of communities around us that do. So if they are appointed here, they can actually work in other community member, or other communities too. So there's probably within the next week or so, we will know if any of those communities need help. And we've already had other people working in other communities for past elections. And so if they, we have a lot of people interested that they will work in other communities, so again, just something that's really exciting about our community members. Um, so then on October nineteenth, I will be attending an alcohol policy seminar. And that is hosted by, as part of the Wisconsin Alcohol Policy Project. Um, the funds for me to be able to attend that was actually made possible by the Milne Youth Coalition. Um, so we're going to see what it's like and in the future ha- maybe have more um people come to that depending on um kind of what the details of this are, so I'm excited about that.
Great. Ashley?
Um, well, speaking of Story Gardens, is it Mike and Chris, Mark from DBW who walled the railing? So um, Mike and Chris from DBW did a great job of constructing and welding the railing of our main ramp that we have at Story Gardens, so come take a look at that. And a couple of trees were removed by um Cody as well. Um, we currently have a story walk set up at Stores Lake um in collaboration with their ICE Trails Mammoth Hike Challenge. So that is going to be up through Sunday, so go out and read that little story. And I just want to mention that we have two clubs available for community members wishing to practice French and Spanish. So the French Community Club, led by retired French teacher Michelle Lupine Usher, meets the third Tuesday of each month at six-thirty. And then Palabras, our Spanish conversation group, um, meets the second two, Thursday of each month at four-thirty and this is actually led by Ashley at the library who speaks Spanish. So community members who want to practice either a foreign language are more than welcome to come and converse with each other.
So our next team building will be learning a foreign language. Chief?
Yesterday, we welcomed our twelfth officer that Al mentioned in his presentation to the city of Milton, had a swearing-in ceremony yesterday afternoon. Her um Angelica Wolf is her name, she goes by Angel, and she'll be starting her field training with Sergeant Geske tomorrow night. So um, again, thank you. Um, getting that twelfth officer, I think, is going to help. Um, we will only get busier as the years go and this will be a great asset, so um, we're pretty excited about that.
Inga?
Um, if anyone is watching on YouTube right now, you'll notice that we have some new cameras that are running. We have three of them in the room right now and big thank you to Steve Jensen again for helping get them installed and up and running. We're still working out a couple glitches, um, but um really happy with the product that we're able to provide to the community through YouTube now. Um, I think that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Mark E.
Leaf collection starts next week, which means fall's here and winter's coming. Um, sewer televising for twenty-twenty-two was wrapped up last week. We haven't seen the report back. Uh, they said that generally there wasn't any major issues, so that's good. Uh, Woodcrest Chapel is progressing a little slower than was initially projected with the schedule provided, but uh it's, it's moving along now. Other than that, just kind of normal routine stuff.
Do you have a joke?
Mark can handle this, it's way better than mine.
Kelsey?
Just working through a budget and then getting ready to gear up for year end, so working through everything, make sure financials are in good shape for year end. That's it.
Thank you. Al?
No, no additional updates for me.
All right, well, it wasn't as bad as we thought it was going to be tonight. Seven oh eight. All right, so as requested by the council, our next meeting date is the fourth Tuesday. So we're going to meet October twenty-fifth and then when will we meet after that?
November first.
November first. So that is our meeting schedule. Some of us are going to be going to La Crosse, correct? For the league conference, so we'll bring back lots of exciting ideas and bother staff with them, so just prepare yourself. Yep. Yep. All the new things we want to try in the city of Milton. And I think that is it. I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Good job, you guys. Seven oh nine at a budget meeting night.